Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all in attendance here in person. I would remind the public to please turn off your cell phones. At this time, I'd like to welcome up for our invocation Sylvia Hobody, and she's going to lead our invocations. And our pledges be led by our very own Commissioner for Precinct One, Commissioner Ryan Williams. If you'll please stand.
Good morning. For your information, this invocation was given by Frances Hamlin, the Chaplain General, to the First Continental Congress in eighteen ninety-two. Our Father, who art in heaven, we bless and praise thy holy name, that we are indeed blessed among nations. We thank thee that thou art the God of nations. We thank thee that we have lived to see thy prophecy filled, and all the ends of the earth turning to this land of light and liberty. Give us grace at this time, and with one accord, to realize what heritage is ours. Help us guard with jealous care our freedom and our liberty. Grant that we may pass it unspotted to our children, and above all, help us to teach them that not only he is free indeed, whom Christ makes free, and only that nation whose God is the Lord. Amen.
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 Thank you. All right, Commissioner.
Please join me. The pledge to our great nation. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now our wonderful state honors the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you, Sylvia. That was a lovely, lovely prayer. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, which is for public comments for items not listed on the agenda. And we have one registered commenter this morning, and it's Mr. Ernest Leinberger, and I'd welcome him forward. Mr. Leinberger, thank you for being here. I will remind you that we have a three-minute time limit, so go right ahead. Please proceed.
Sir, thank you. With deep respect for the Commissioners' Court and the work that you do, I stand to introduce myself, Ernest Leinberger, a retired naval officer, living in Denton County, as the Democratic nominee for a seat in the U.S. House of Representatives for Texas Congressional District Twenty-six. I would also like to express my appreciation and support for your agenda item regarding the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. It is clear to me that recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of this important segment of our society is a critical part of bringing us all together with one, as one diverse community. With mutual support and respect, we improved the quality of life for everyone. Lastly, I would like to express my support for Election Day Vote Centers for Denton County in the manner similar to our early voting polling place requirements. This is not a new or dangerous effort. Many other counties are already enjoying the benefits of vote centers. I encourage this esteemed court to take on the challenge, clear the last of the hurdles, and make this a reality for Denton County. Thank you for what you do for Denton County and for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have several guests with us this morning. Let's go ahead and proceed to item three, which is our Resolutions Awards and Reports and Presentations. And I'd like to welcome up our members of the Benjamin Lyon Group for Denise Andrews and the rest of the group who is with us today. This is for item three A, approval of a proclamation recognizing September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and any appropriate action. So who do we have with us? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Did y'all want to make any introductory comments before we do your proclamation?
I'd like to say thank you very much to Judge Eads and the rest of the Commissioners for allowing us to commemorate the Constitution and celebrate Constitution Week for us since it's our nation's most sacred document.
That's right. Good. Well, thank you. So here we go. So this is a court proclamation recognizing September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as Constitution Week. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two-hundredth and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations with, which will commemorate this occasion. It is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, and for all Americans to honor their rights, privileges, and responsibilities they afforded us in this unique document. And now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the week of September the seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as Constitution Week. We urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege provides, and further to vigilantly protect the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Done in open court this the seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Did you want to say something, Commissioner? You usually do. It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. These fall allergies, so that is no problem. Well, on behalf of the Commissioners' Court, we just want to echo the comments in the proclamation and thank y'all for, thank y'all for reminding the public and for reminding us and those watching about the Constitution. I think many times we potentially take that for granted, you know, as part of our, maybe many times don't reflect upon it and truly what a unique document it is. And that other people have copied and replicated it and the core components of it in their countries as well since then. So, so thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for y'all's civic mindedness, and we appreciate it. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll take a picture down here. All right, Kim and Kelsey, did y'all want to make an introduction on our next one? I don't know either one of y'all wanted to. Let's go ahead and go to item three B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing September the fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four as Hispanic Heritage Month in Denton County and any appropriate action. And I know we have several representatives from our LULAC group. If y'all would like to make introductions, we'd love to hear from you.
Go introduce yourselves.
Yeah.
I'll introduce myself. All right. Well, good morning, County Commissioners. This is Stephanie Aguilar. She's one of our members for LULAC, and she's one of our officers as well. My name is Lilian Prado Carrillo, and I am the president of LULAC here in Denton. So for those of you that don't know what LULAC is, LULAC is the oldest and the largest civil rights organization in the country. It was founded more than ninety-five years ago, and here in Denton, we've been here in existence since nineteen eighty-one. Our mission with the League of United Latin American Citizens is to advance the economic condition, the educational attainment, the political influence, housing health, and civil rights of the Hispanic community in the United States. I appreciate the invitation to be here today. Thank you for the proclamation that you are about to issue. As president of LULAC and as an educator here in Denton for more than eighteen years, and I've been a resident for almost forty years, I have seen firsthand the strength and the resilience and the deep contributions of the Hispanic community. We are not just a part of Denton, we are woven into its very fabric. Our community represents more than twenty-five percent of Denton's population and thirty-one percent of the K-12 population in our schools. In addition to that, we have three institutions of higher education in the city. Each of them are classified as HSI, meaning that they are Hispanic-serving institutions, which means that they have more than twenty-five percent of the student body is Hispanic. Our contributions to the local force, labor force, to education, to the economy are undeniable here. We add billions of dollars in taxes and consumer spending, keeping our local economies thriving. Yet despite these contributions, we continue to face harmful and false narratives that paint us as others. But we are not others. We are Denton. We have deep roots here. Some of us have been here longer than Texas itself. And like many, and many others like myself were also brought here in hopes and search of a better life, just like so many before me. Our community is made up of more than twenty-one Spanish-speaking countries all across the world, united by our shared values, our family, our hard work, and a deep love for this country and this community. We are part of the labor force. We are in classrooms. We are business owners. We are leaders. Our differences don't divide us. They enrich us, and they enrich this community. We need to remind others that we are here to continue to contribute, and especially faced with sensationalized and degrading stereotypes, we need to make sure that we come together and that we combat this together. Through organizations like LULAC and many others, like Proyecto Diez, Hispanic Women's Network of Texas, organizations like Otis, and so many committees that are doing the good work here in the county, in addition to not our high schools that have LULAC programs, our colleges, UNT and TWU, and now even our middle schools are starting junior LULACs as service organizations. So we are thankful for that. We have celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and want to express our deep gratitude for all of you and for taking the time to do this, and for your commitment to helping us fulfill our mission. This week, I was personally touched to see the outpouring of support across Texas and the county following the mistreatment of one of our LULAC members in San Antonio. Her name is Lydia Martinez in an act of voter suppression. And so we ask that you continue to help this. And we are also, as an organization, in favor of Election Day Voting Centers, to make sure that everybody that has the right to vote and that wants to vote can be part of this initiative. LULAC will be the largest, or is the largest member-based Latino civil rights organization in the country, and we can't do this without the passion and the commitment. Our volunteers, our members, and also our elected officials like yourself take pride in knowing that Latinos contribute tremendously to America. Contrary to harmful rhetoric that sometimes circulates, Latinos add more than three-point-two trillion dollars to the U.S. economy in twenty twenty-three alone. We are the driving force. We are part of the driving force behind this country's economic engine, and we are thankful to be part of that. So we thank you today during Hispanic Heritage Month. We invite anyone that's interested in talking to us to please come to our meeting. We will be hosting a breakfast, community breakfast, free of charge, next Saturday at Angelina's in Hickory Creek. So we invite you to come talk to us, let us know what any concerns are, and see how we can come together and continue to be a community that is united. So thank you for all that you do, and I thank Mr. Leinberger for speaking up for the proclamation, also Stephanie, and then also for your staff that has been helping us to put things together. So thank you so much.
Perfect. Well, thank you, and we're excited to be able to do this. We've done many activities over the years with the county and our Office of History and Culture. And Peggy, did you want to add any comments as well?
Hi. I'm just so glad I got to know Lilian and so many of the members of the Denton LULAC. They've helped us throughout the years with exhibits and programs, and I hope next year we'll be able to be back in the courthouse so we can do some more programming. But thank you so much for all you've done to introduce me and my staff to the Hispanic community. Kelsey Distel, our education program manager, has a few words she'd like to say about events happening throughout the county.
Thank you. Lilian mentioned some great events already, but since Hispanic Heritage Month kicks off on September fifteenth, there's already been some great events happening throughout the county. Over the weekend, the Colony celebrated their Tejano Music Fiesta at Grandscape, and then the, let's see, Little Elm also celebrated Mexican Independence Day on September sixteenth. But coming up, the Lewisville Public Library is hosting an event on September twenty-fourth from six to seven-thirty P.M. It's their Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, as well as they have an exhibit at the Lewisville Grand Theater from September twentieth through November sixteenth. Here in Denton, the Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration at the MLK Recreation Center will be, oh, that was this Saturday. I apologize. And then, yeah, the American Legion is hosting an event on September twenty-seventh. So lots of great events. I hope that many people will attend. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, great. Well, in addition, Lily, great comments, and I appreciate your sentiments and your comments that you made. But I'll also add to that, that, you know, you're talking about the contributions of the Hispanic community here in the county as a whole, but I would just also say in our county government, you know, the number of employees that we have as employees that help and officials and leaders here in the county government. And so I want to pay close attention and give a shout out to them because they're a welcome part of our, an integral part of our fabric of our Denton County workforce and our Denton County families, so they make lasting contributions as well. So, as you were talking about this, I was, I was thinking of Peggy Riddle and Peggy Capps and I, when we renamed and we brought it to Commissioners' Court, the Office of History and Culture, it was more like the museum department before. And we really thought that that was kind of a dated name, and we really wanted to look back onto our history, obviously, but our culture here in the county presently and moving forward. And that's why we renamed the Office of History and Culture. And I'm so glad the Office of History and Culture has a rich legacy of working with the different communities across the county to celebrate the successes and the contributions they've made, past, present, and future. So we're glad that partnership continues. So, so thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead. Did you, ma'am, did you want to make any comments as well? Okay, you're good. All right. So I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation honoring Denton County Hispanic Heritage Month from September the fifteenth through October the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September the fifteenth to October the fifteenth by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight. Whereas Hispanics have embraced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs in their communities. Whereas the cultural, educational, economic, and political influence of Hispanics and Latino-Americans in Denton County and Texas can be seen and appreciated in all aspects of our lives, as Hispanics continue to be crucial to the growth of our community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby proclaim September the fifteenth through October, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Denton County Hispanic Heritage Month, and calls on the people of Denton County to share in this special annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Hispanic and Latino-Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. Done in open court this the seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any additional comments from the members? Are we good? All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. All right. Let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to approve it as presented?
Certainly.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of Budgetman Request one zero two four eight zero for emergency management to transfer three thousand dollars from radio radar repair and five thousand from training and education to wireless services for a total transfer of eight thousand dollars to cover the overage. Hello.
It's red. There it is. It's on.
All right, there we go. I don't blame it. Where are we at? Two C. Two C, approval of the Budgetman Request one zero two four eight zero for emergency management to transfer three thousand dollars from radio radar repair and five thousand from training and education to wireless services for a total transfer of eight thousand dollars to cover the overage in the line item and any anticipated expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two D is approval of Budgetman Request one zero two five two zero for public facilities to transfer thirty thousand dollars from Loop two eighty-eight Administrative Courthouse Electric Water Service and thirty-seven thousand from the Carroll Building County Administration Electric Water Service for a total transfer of sixty-seven thousand for various building electric service items to fund electric services for the remainder of the fiscal year. And item two E is approval of the July and August twenty twenty-four Road Superintendent Reports. This is presented for recording purposes only. All right, let's proceed to item four A, which is a public hearing for today, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to consider, approve, and or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district Z A two four zero one. This property is R five nine three eight eight, is located in abstract seven nine zero, the C Manchaca survey, tract twenty-six. This is one point seven two acres. This is located in Commissioner Precinct One. We have a motion to open the We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open, please.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We are in our public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request?
Judge, do you mind if I have Mr. Bellnap come up real quick?
Yes, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Mr. Bellnap, if you will, I, I just want to know what the Lake Ray Roberts Planning and Zoning, what their vote was on this particular request.
It, it was unanimous to approve the request.
To approve, okay. Okay, that's all I needed, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you, yes, sir. All right, is there anyone else in this, in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? All right, hearing now, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams to close the public hearing. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Approve.
We have a motion for approval of the item by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, yes, sir. Next is item five A, this is approval of the bill report. Payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge, I have one addition to date. Padele T. National Title Agency for one million dollars even.
All right, we have a, we have a motion for the amended bill report from Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeff, for making that all happen. And our treasurer, Cindy Brown, did a great job with all that, that action item. Next is item six A, approval to declare as surplus outdated equipment to, to use as trade-in for the purchase of the network, TAPs. Approval of purchase of Garland Technology Network, TAPs, from Innovation Network Technologies in the net amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents to the Texas Department of Information Resources. This is a DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR CPO four eight seven three. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of the renewal of the ITV two three two seven six two Fire alarm, fire sprinkler, kitchen hood system, and radio tower building inspections and testing to allied fire protection.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of specifications authorized to advertise, RFP two four two eight two nine, the vending services. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of the purchase of property insurance from the Texas Association of Counties. This is a tax risk management pool for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of the purchase of auto and general liability insurance coverage from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of purchase of solid state drives from Freeit Data Solutions Incorporated as approved reseller for Karasoff Technology Corporation in amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and six, eight, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eight cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contract, DIR CPO four 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 four.
Approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G, approval of purchase of eight cubicles from Plano Off Supply in amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to the Tarrant County Cooperative Contract, zero, two zero, two two, zero five one. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of the purchase of elastic cloud security information and event management tool from GTS Technology Solutions Incorporated in amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents to the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR TSO four two eight eight. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six I, approval of purchase of Cisco QSFP transceivers from Presidio Holding Incorporated, an approved reseller of Cisco Systems Incorporated in amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents to the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR TSA, TSO four one six seven.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of Budgetman Request one zero two five zero zero for the purchasing department to transfer one hundred and seventy-five thousand within county vehicles from unappropriated contingency to vehicle equipment to cover an overage due to an increase for equipment on the sheriff's office fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five vehicles.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, real quick.
Yes, please.
It, it's pretty, it does say exactly why this is occurring. Obviously, you know, these vehicles were purchased at one point in time. By the time we actually finally get them, everything's increased. As we all know, we're all hitting inflation, so that's why we had to come back and ask for more money for the sheriff's department on these cars. Thank you, Judge.
You bet. All right, will we, any other comments? Our motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of Budgetman Request one zero two five one zero for the sheriff's office to transfer seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars within capital equipment and one thousand eighty dollars for administrative equipment to capital equipment for a total transfer of eighteen thousand, five hundred and three dollars to cover the cost of purchasing three drones to be used by the Special Operations Unit to aid in investigations and surveillance and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in Justice of the Peace Precinct One. One new hire in UN approval. Two new hires in the sheriff's office, one of them detention officer one. That's it for this week.
Very good, thank you. All right, next is item ten A, this is approval of preliminary plat and pre-development agreement for Tabor Ranch, which includes developer-funded improvements to George Owens Row. The requirement of an approved fire protection plan and the following variance requests. This is one, minimum lot size is forty-five hundred square feet. Two, the minimum lot width measurements along the building line is forty feet. Number three, the minimum front building setback shall be twenty feet. Number four, local street should be a minimum of fifty foot of right-of-way and thirty-one foot wide concrete pavement measured from back of curb to back of curb. And five, utilities are permissible within the right-of-way with sanitary sewer and storm drainage should be located under the pavement. This is located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item twelve A, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five between Denton County, Texas and Cook County, Texas for the emergency housing and care of inmates and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of peace officer training reimbursement agreements between Denton County Sheriff's Office and Gary Bonin, Jack Draper, Henry Terry, and Ray Vincent.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of the notice of election for the fiscal, for November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, general election to elect presidential electors, members of Congress, members of the legislature, the state, district, county, and precinct officers and any appropriate action. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
But here in Texas, you have until October the seventh to actually register to vote in this presidential election. So anyone who's not yet registered, get a move on. We need you. Thank you.
Very good comments. We need everybody to be a part of the process, so we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. I do want to thank Frank Phillips and our Relations Administration team. It's a very large effort to get this agenda item on this, on this agenda and I want to thank y'all for all y'all's professionalism and diligence, Frank. Next is thirteen B, approval of acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five Office of the Governor's Specialty Courts Program Grant. This is the Veterans Treatment Court in amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents and the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County budget line items and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement, the ICA, between Denton County, Texas and the town of Oak Point for collection of special assessments levied by Oak Point seven two O Public Improvement District and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Nothing for me today, sir.
All right, no, all right, no report. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. I've got a couple of things here. So in Frisco, there's going to be a role with the council on September twenty-first, first at ten AM. That's riding along with elected officials. That'll be at Stafford Middle School. In Crossroads, a reminder that Annual Founder's Day is coming up on the twenty-first from two thirty to eight. That's at eighty-four hundred Fist Trap Road. It's Crossroads fifty-first birthday. And in Carrollton, there's the Neighborhood Safety and Crime Prevention Workshop on the twenty-fifth at six PM and that's in the Municipal Court Community Room. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Lexi's Music Series in Flower Mountain, September twentieth, and Paper Shredding Day, September the twenty-first in Holland Village. Lewisville Light Cycle, Cycles, Go in the Dark Bike Ride, September the twentieth. Child Safety Seat Inspection and Installation, September the twenty-third, eight thirty to AM to eleven AM at the Lewisville Fire Station Three. So please, if you need a child, a safety seat put in the car for the babies, please go in and get that done. That's all I have, I think.
Perfect, Commissioner Edmondson.
In the interest of not coughing, I'm only going to read one thing. Trophy Club has an unusual thing going on, it's called Cars and Coffee. It will be at HG Supply Company, September twenty-eighth, from eight to eleven in the morning. It's on the one fourteen Frontage Road. It's a free event to view some very fantastic cars, you're all invited.
Perfect, thank you, that sounds fun. And I want to comment about the town of Flower Mountain is accepting nominations for the two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding Citizenship Awards. These awards are open to residents and groups that positively impact the community, enhance the community, and address a community need or concern. And you can make your nomination to the Town of Flower Mountain website by November the first. So I think that is, that is great. And, and I want to announce that the Denton Tennis and Pickleball Center wins a national award. Denton Tennis and Pickleball Center was one of forty-one winners in the United States Tennis Association for the two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding Facility Awards. Recognizing their construction and renovation of the tennis courts, the center is located at eleven seventeen Ronnie Road in Denton and with twelve lighted tennis courts and eight lighted pickleball courts. So shout out to Denton, the city of Denton for that.
Judge, could I just make a quick announcement? Lantana is building a pickleball court and it's not only for Lantana residents. So any of y'all that are interested, it's under construction now and it'll be a lot of time.
It's going to be great. And they're doing some more out at Ropes and Ranch, too, I think, as well.
Oh, yeah, actually, they've got bocce ball. We have indoor bocce ball.
It's a thing. All right, we are not going to have an executive session today, so hearing no other. I would like to go call our attention to item eighteen. There'll be no Commissioners Court meeting on October the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, so no court on October twenty-second. So hearing no other items before the court, we are adjourned.